Here we go, here we go. I'd like to call this city council meeting to order. Would you please stand and join me in a pledge? Mr. Larry Coleman, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or meditation. Thank you. Melody, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Michler.
Present.
Councilman Fish. Councilman Hines. Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Present. Thank you. This is reminding everyone in council chambers, if you have your cell phone on, make sure it's on vibrate or airplane mode. And for the council members, make sure you speak into your mics so we can be recorded properly in the minutes. Could I have a motion for approval for the minutes of March 3rd?
Second.
Twenty twenty-five. I got a motion from Mr. Hinke, second from Mrs. Hines. All those who favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Presentations and introductions. Ms. Dana Donald from Community Development.
Good afternoon. Do I put my name in?
Good evening.
I'm with Community Development and the Human Relations Commission.
Introduce yourself to us.
I'm sorry, Dana Donald with the City of Elkhart. I'm at Community Development and Human Relations. This year, we did our third annual fair housing poster contest with youth, and we partnered with the Elkhart County Board of Realtors who are here. My chair people are here, Mary Jo Wirick and Dana Ervey. We also partnered with Tolson and the Dream Academy, Ms. Danielle Neal, and they want to come up and award the poster contest winners.
Thank you.
Well, not yet. So, I don't know if it's easier for, do they face you?
Yes, they face us and introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Toni Bontrager. I'm with the Elkhart County Board of Realtors. I currently serve as the president.
Hi, Nicholas Wise, past president of the Elkhart County Board of Realtors.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight, and we are excited about presenting this.
Yeah, we appreciate the opportunity that the council provides us to honor and recognize these young people from the Dream Academy who have gone out of their way and taken the extra time to put together their depictions of a fair housing initiative. We thought we had some amazing artwork this year. It was by far the most submissions we've ever received, so we were very pleased with the results and very proud of these young people.
We're excited to announce the winners, as I'm sure they're excited as well. So, we'd like to start with grades five through six, and our first place winner, Myla Williams.
Is that Myla? Would you stand right up here, please, as I renounce the others?
Hey, I meant to say one more thing, and I apologize.
Turn around.
We also want to let everyone know that the artwork will be on display at Tolson Center starting, I believe by next week. That'll all be up on display for everyone to see.
Oh, I don't have that written down. What school are you from, honey? Myla is from the Premier Arts Academy. Okay, second place, Alonso Rivera.
What school are you from, Alonso?
Alonso said he's from Roosevelt. And third place for the fifth and sixth grades is Hope Gibson. Bless her heart, we'll save that for her. So, grades three through four, Mayjae McKnight is our first place winner. Second place is Malaya Roundtree. Okay, let's go. I think this one's here, Sanai Williams. Sanai is from Premier Arts. Okay, we had second graders. This was awesome. We had no clue that they would be interested, and this is so wonderful. So, our first place for second graders is Brielle Wheeler. Second place is Messiah Carr.
What school is that?
Messiah is from Roosevelt. And then our third place is Mariah Christopher. Oh, Mariah is from Mary Daly. Thank you all of you so much. And this was so hard. As you can see, they're beautiful, and their imaginations, and we were so impressed. This was a very difficult task. I wanted everybody to win. It was awesome.
All right, could we get the recipients to come back here so we can take a picture with the council? Just stand right, right in front here. Mary, you want to join us? You want to join them?
While everybody's lining up, I just wanted to talk about, the theme was, won't you be my neighbor? And we had 23 entries, and like Ms. Toni Bontrager said, we had the three little children from the second grade who just jumped right in. We were so excited to have them. And I don't know if Mary Jo wants to say something after the picture or get in the picture, but...
All their posters are on display back here in the back of the room for everyone. I forgot. Okay. All the posters, the winning posters are on display back here on the table, so have a look at them before you leave. We're so proud of all of you. Thank you.
And I want you to know that Mary Jo is a former council secretary of a long time. We have some more, some more recipients coming in.
Is that one of your winners?
Thank you. Malaya Roundtree, third and fourth grade, our second place winner, and she's from Roosevelt.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I'll take a picture real quick.
With the Realtors, would you guys like to join us as well, please? Yes, please. Please join us. A big round of applause. A big round of applause. We're gonna take like a five-minute break for the parents and the kids that want to leave right now. We'll take a little five-minute break so you can leave. Watch me. Watch me. You better. You just like getting here. Hurry up. Yeah, we got a forum without you. Yeah, and then some, I think.
Oh, yeah, we've got two left off, and Daffodil's starting.
There we go. There we go.
Pyasins, the great pyasins, yeah.
Kleenex, I don't know if I have any.
I don't know what I do. Yeah, we always plant a big garden, too.
Oh, yeah.
Try to do as much of...
Yeah, we have none of that.
Control what you're eating, it makes a big difference. We do. Try to do a little bit of everything, so... Yep. Yep, pull it out of the freezer or...
There you go. Couple left. Tell little Patty to get some more of that.
I like bees, too.
She said...
I would love to be a beekeeper. I... That's why we pay... There's a few people around us that do have bees.
All right. Well, that's probably good for your plants.
Yeah, very good, yeah. Population is good there. Be good to start that process, yeah. I have a trumpet vine, and they like that a lot. It's off in the side yard so that when the bees and everything come around, it's not... Sit out on your patio and not be attacked or...
All right, we're gonna reconvene here. Mayor Rod, would you close those doors back there for us, please? Thank you. Unfinished business, there are no reports of council committees. There are no ordinances on second and third reading. There are no ordinances and resolutions referred to committee. There are no table ordinances and resolutions. New business, we have ordinances on first reading. Would you please read Proposed Ordnance 25-0-48 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance...
Oh, eight, I'm sorry. Oh, eight.
Oh, eight, yes. Proposed ordinance 25-0-08, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5963, establishing rates and charges for the use and services rendered by the Water Utility System of the City of Elkhart, Indiana by replacing Appendix A and Appendix B as approved by the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission.
Thank you. If there are no objections, this order shall be passed on a second reading. Would you read Proposed Ordnance 25-0-09-09 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-09, an ordinance appropriating $8,984,000 from the general fund for the new Fire Station Six.
Thank you. If there are no objections, this shall be passed on a second reading. Would you read Proposed Resolution 25-R-05?
Proposed Resolution 25-R-05, a resolution of the common council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, declaring a certain area to be an economic revitalization area for the purpose of granting tax phase-in benefits to Jacobs and Thompson LTD, DBA, Worldwide Foam, CJ SV Properties, Inc.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. A motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Mrs. Hines. Counsel discussion, Mr. Wise.
Good evening, council. Drew Wines, Economic Development. Worldwide Foam is a supplier and producer of foam products and adhesives. They service the automotive industry and major retail chains, supplying companies all around the U.S. This project involves a $2,843,470 investment in personal property equipment, which includes investments in advanced manufacturing. Worldwide Foam plans to add 56 new jobs with an average annual salary of $59,477. We are recommending a five-year personal property tax phase-in, and there's a representative from Worldwide Foam here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel discussion. Mr. Hinke.
Five-year, was there a real improvement as well?
This is just personal property.
Just personal property of $2 million?
$2,843,000.
Yeah, but still. And then why a five-year?
So that is, that is in line with previous abatements that we've approved. Voyant Beauty was $3.1 million in personal property investment, and they also had a five-year. But Worldwide Foam received points for investments in advanced manufacturing, having Elkhart as their, as their national headquarters, and also their high jobs and wages. Their retained jobs are at $70,000.
So what I'm after on this one, then, they have how many plants outside of Elkhart?
That would be a question for a representative from Worldwide Foam.
And so are we, are we saying Elkhart is truly their world headquarters or national headquarters?
It's my understanding they have several plants outside of Elkhart.
Yeah, but is Elkhart City their national headquarters to qualify for the extra points on the abatement? I guess is what I'm after.
That is my understanding.
I just want to make certain of that.
Mr. Hinke, Mr. Hinke, would you answer that question for Mr. Hinke? I think that's a great question. Would you come to the mic and let us know who you are?
Yes, Elkhart, Indiana is our national headquarters.
What's your name, sir?
Sorry, Don Fransen, General Manager, Worldwide Foam.
All right.
Yes, Elkhart is our national headquarters.
And it's not overly appropriate, but not inappropriate, for me to ask then either, because Elkhart has a history of EPA concerns, but your history of EPA concerns, your plants.
The current plant we are, it has had a history of EPA concerns, and we bought the building in 2014 and did a Phase One inspection and was clean at that point in time.
Do you have any open mitigation plans at this time?
There are no open mitigation issues.
Very good, sir. Thank you.
Great question, Mr. Hinke. Any other counsel discussion? Seeing now, it opened up to the public. Anyone in the audience would like to speak with regards to this resolution. Seeing now, we turn it back to the council. Any further discussion? If not, Melody, would you do a roll call vote on this resolution, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
This is eight to zero.
Resolution passes. There are no vacation hearings. Other new business, council, Mr. Hinke.
A little latitude, but we do have a couple of things before us. It has to do with Elkhart City water and water rates. And, you know, we've just opened the Elkhart Clinic today. I know there's a lot of news about that. But one of the things I want to make sure that we look at moving forward, and it's been something that's wearing on me, I'm hopeful that as a city, as a council, we can step into it. And it really has to do with the protection of our future water supply. You know, we still have 10 superfund sites in the state of Indiana. We have new areas of plumes, as we've just witnessed with Elkhart Clinic. We're looking at building a Fire Station Six on an area that's a half-block from the GSL contamination site. And I would hope that we would do the due justice, or due diligence, on behalf of those firefighters that will be sleeping, working out of that area to make sure Level One, Level Two are complete, so that we don't have anything on our hands to say that we didn't do the right thing by them. I mentioned, you know, the auto place on Bristol Street that parks vehicles on the lawn, and of course, these are used vehicles. They drip. I also mentioned those on State Road 19, and I know the president said, "Well, those are in the county", but I'm not sure that the dripping of antifreeze and transmission fluid and motor oil realize they're in the county and they can't come to the city. A plume is a plume, and it's very close to the Conrail plume that you know went all the way through. And when those folks in 2001 turned on their showerheads, it was diesel fuel. And so they were emergently hooked up to city services, no different than those people on John Weaver Parkway, emergency services. And I just, I just hope that we don't get so focused on what beautiful things are being put above ground that we stop looking at what's below ground, because it does affect the future health of our city, the future health of its inhabitants. So I'm asking us to really make a focus here. And we can do this as a council and as administration, and everything that's happening. I know it's busy. I know, you know, the city through the mayor's been involved in so many things. But clean water and clean soil is one of those things we need to pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business? I know we're having a grand opening or ribbon cutting for the wastewater utilities completion, so that's something to hope everyone can attend and gain information from that. Reports, Mayor, Board of Works, Board of Safety. Brent Curry, Neighborhood Association, I mean Neighborhood Association meeting.
Well, not a lot going on. We didn't have a meeting since our last meeting, but we did, we were happy to receive the email from Patty. Patty G. informing us it's time to sign up for neighborhood cleanups this year, and we had a very successful neighborhood cleanup last year, and we haven't picked a date yet, but we plan to do it again in the Pemeraan Neighborhood Association, because we want to make sure everybody keep their trash moving. Thank you.
The Neighborhood Association reports. Sir, sir, not yet. You with Neighborhood Association?
Yes.
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 You gotta tell us this, Chad. Yes, sir.
Good evening, President Dawson and council members. My name is Nick Marks. I live at 1018 Cedar Street.
Could you, could you make sure you speak into that mic, because we're gonna get everything you said on the minutes?
Okay.
And you can pull it down towards you, too.
You want me to start over?
Yes, please.
Good evening, President Dawson and council members. My name is Nick Marks. I live at 1018 Cedar Street. I'm a member of the Strong Avenue Neighborhood Association. I'd like to take this opportunity to provide an update from the March 4th Neighborhood Association meeting, which took place at Mary Daly Elementary School with approximately 66 attendees. Meeting began with a discussion of positive developments in the neighborhood, including city plumbing efforts, residents maintaining walkways, and strong engagement within the association. The treasurer reported a balance of $578, and the 501(c)(3) application remains in progress with assistance from the Indiana Small Business Center. Community events were reviewed, including a holiday light contest held on December 22nd, where participation is automatic just by displaying holiday lights. There were first, second, and third place prizes, all receiving a gift card from a local establishment. The formation of a Triangle Park Committee with volunteers set to meet on March 13th. The Daly-5K and Block Party on May 3rd with a call for volunteers. This is a fundraiser benefiting Mary Daly Elementary, and invite each of you to either race, volunteer, or attend. A neighborhood spring cleanup at Hayden Park in partnership with the City of Elkhart is scheduled for May 17th from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Our annual neighborhood garage sale will be on June 7th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and a potential community mixer at Westwind Brewery in May. Chief Rodney Dale of the Elkhart Fire Department provide an update on the, on an odor investigation at the Elkhart Clinic, which was reported on multiple occasions. The Indiana Department of Environmental Management has been involved in air monitoring and site inspections with no immediate cause identified. Further testing, including soil borings and water sampling, is expected. IDEM expects to review a full report within the next several weeks. IDEM Representative Tim Veach, specializing in petroleum compliance, explained the process of investigating contamination sources. He noted that while small amounts of contaminants have been found, the scope remains limited, and vapor mitigation at the clinic is functioning. Situation remains under review with continued monitoring required. The next neighborhood meeting is scheduled for June 3rd at 7:00 p.m. at the Triangle of Strong, South Strong, and Highland Avenues, which you all are invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're more than welcome. Come back anytime. Thanks, Chad.
I just wanted to say that I had an opportunity, and some others of us were there, for that Strong Avenue meeting and, or neighborhood meeting, and it was well put together. Our fire chief did a nice job. Our chief of staff did a nice job, and it was a true informative, well-thought-out meeting. So thank you for those collaborative efforts and information.
Thank you. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Want to announce, there's a Neighborhood Association meeting Wednesday at 5:30 at Magneton Park, and that is open to the public. If you're interested or want more information, how to start a Neighborhood Association, one of the organizers, Wendy Cruz, she's over off Hester, what's the side street? Franklin, Hudson Clinic, that area, but we're inviting all six districts, the other districts, too. But six districts, if you want to start a new Neighborhood Association, thank you.
Council President, we did have a, one report from our departments that didn't get a chance to get up in enough time to do so. If you can give a little latitude. Yes, yes. Wonderful.
How we doing? I'm Alex Otto, Director of Communications. We're gonna be giving another Aspire update, and this one's a fun one. It's Parks, Parks, and More Parks. So we can go to the next slide. We've got four parks that are gonna be completed within the next two months. First, we're gonna have Weston Park, former location of Western Elementary. And additionally, other than the new playground, they're also gonna be adding some kid-sized soccer goals to the green space and making sure that people can utilize the entire space there. We can go to the next slide. We can go to the next slide. We've got Island Park. This is a, this is the big one. This is a three-story immersive playground. And they also completed, as many of you know, last year, the 18-hole disc golf course. And that's all in a greater effort to further enhance and engage the Island Park area as well as bringing back some events that had left that park. And encourage you guys all to get down that way. It's, that's going to be a great park. We can go to the next slide. We've also got Geraldine Thursby Memorial Tot Lot. That one will be done here in April. And that's a kind of an interesting park. I got to learn a little bit about it from Jamison. That was named after a little girl who did not have a park in her neighborhood and was playing where she shouldn't have been and got hit by a car. And it was named after her, in her honor. And so... The Geraldine Thursby Memorial Tot Lot is off of Lexington.
Of Moody, Grady? River Vista area? The River Vista area? No, no. It's the River Vista area. Vista.
River Vista area. Get that on the record. But that, that'll be a really nice addition to that neighborhood. And we'll, yeah, we're excited to see that one come to fruition. One last slide. And then we've got Walker Park, which has gone through several different stages. But that is going to be getting its final touches. They're going to be putting in some exercise equipment. And they will be finishing the restroom facility. And there's been a big focus on that park to have accessibility, including a kind of a unique thing. They have an adult changing station in the bathroom, which was specifically requested by the residents in that area. And I had my daughter over there just this weekend. There was probably 100 kids at that park. So it is going to get well utilized. And we're excited to keep going back there. And each of these parks, we will be doing an Aspire kickoff event for them. We haven't outlined those dates yet, but we will make sure that we invite all the city council members as well as the community to come out and do something special to welcome those parks into the neighborhoods. Do you have any questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hinky.
I noted, appreciate the parks, the updates, and all of those things. Two flood every year. So my question would be, what do we do for flood mitigation, especially at the park on Lexington, as well as Island Park? It floods as well. I just don't know the amount of resources and what happens, how much of it gets carried away, or is it built with floods in mind?
And I'm happy to get back with you on that. I'm obviously not a park designer.
Flood me with information, if you will.
I will flood you with some information.
Thank you.
Jamison will make, and I will, will get an answer for that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you, Jamison, for what you do. River Vista.
River Vista. Thank you, guys.
I'd like to also acknowledge our park ranger who has a birthday, is it today? Mr. Coleman? He is 57 years young, is that correct? 57, so happy birthday, Larry Coleman, who's one of our park rangers. He might be a little older than 57. I don't know. I don't want to say his age. Okay. Scheduling of committee meetings? Are there any scheduling, scheduling of committee meetings? Acceptance of communications?
So moved.
Got a motion from Mr. Michler, second from Mrs. Hines. Accept communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Got a motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Mrs. Hines. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.